Ready?
We're ready.
You're good.
Okay, great. We will call the Planning Commission meeting to order for the regular meeting Wednesday, October 21st, 2020. So for our agenda, items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more items may be, for consideration, may be combined. And any item on the agenda may be removed or a later discussion may be delayed at any time. So with that, a reminder that there's no in-person attendance at this particular meeting, and we're live streaming. We'll have the option for telephone-in comments later during the meeting. We'll go ahead and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And this is the opportunity for public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item. If an agenda item is also listed as a public hearing, persons may wait to speak until that particular item. And the phone number is up now, 702-589-9629, to provide comment. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the phone-in portion, and I understand we have a public comment. Tammy, was that for this portion or the agenda item?
It is for this portion, the agenda item. And I just wanted to mention if we could leave the public comment portion open just for a few more minutes, because somebody had called before the meeting started, and because of the delay, she said she was going to try calling back.
Thank you.
So I'll read this, but the phone may ring.
Sure.
So this first and only public comment that I received is from Alan Goya. My name is Alan Goya, and I live at 413 Utah Street. I would like to comment on file number V-20-649, variance at 307 Utah Street. I have reviewed the Ariati's plans, feel their additions are compatible with the neighborhood. I know the Ariatis, and am very confident that they will do a first-class job. Having spoken to them, they have a great appreciation of the historic significance of their property. As a neighbor, I am in favor of what they are proposing to do.
Thank you, and we'll continue to wait then for a potential call-in.
This is the one we've been waiting on?
Put the mic there, Tammy.
I will.
Thank you.
Oh, no, she just hung up. I'm going to see if I can call it back.
Hello?
Hi, this is Tammy at City Hall, and we got disconnected, but you can go ahead.
Tammy?
Yes, can you hear us?
I can hear you. My concern, Mary Shope for the record, I don't have you guys up video to follow you at all, so I don't know where we are in the meeting of sorts. Are we on the public hearing?
We're in the first public comment portion, so you're able to speak on any items that are on the agenda today.
Okay, but you will also have, Chairman, you will also have a public hearing part under item, I think it's agenda item number two, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'd like to reserve my time and comments to be addressed during the public hearing, because I'm a property owner, and I'd like it to be under that part of the meeting, if I could, please.
Okay, so you're saying you want to call back and not offer your comments now?
Well, I, not knowing what's on the agenda as present, my, okay, public comments, I'd like to comment under the public hearing notice portion of the agenda item number two, if I could, as Mary Shope, a property owner up at 3 Hill Site. And I can share my phone number with Tammy, so she can call me back in case I don't get connected at the appropriate time, or maybe you could put your phone on speaker, so I can hear the commission as they do their deliberations.
I'm not able to do that, because then that doesn't allow anybody else to call in for public comments or the public hearing. So you'll have to call in. Are you following along on the livestream?
Um, it's, I went to the, how do I, yeah, it says City Council Meeting Livestream, Planning Commission, October 21st, and it doesn't, it says media is not yet available. And I've gone in and out, in and out, and I have a pretty good high-tech system at home, so I don't think it's on my end that I'm not connecting with you, you referencing the city and the meeting.
Okay, I can call your number then during the public hearing?
Well, the only thing is, is how, I guess, sorry, and I know this is out public, how do I understand how the commission and what questions they're asking as to before they open it to the public portion of a public hearing without knowing what they've said and all of that?
I'll go and check the livestream right now. It's on, Mary.
Um...
So you're going to have to just refresh your computer.
Okay, I went out. Give me another couple more seconds. I mean, I've been waiting since before six, I know. Hang on, I gotta move a few things. Please. We'll move in there.
And just so you know, you're live right now for everybody?
I understand.
Okay.
I have to walk you through a little bit while you're on the line. I apologize to everybody. Public notices, down to Planning Commission. I may be faster probably if I drove down there and be there. Planning Agenda. I'm going to go under the...
I don't even think you're in the right area. Go back to the homepage and go up to How Do I, and then do View Meetings.
Homepage. How Do I?
View.
Give me a second. View Meetings.
There you go.
Public records, public notices, City Code Meeting Agenda.
View Council and Committee Meetings Live.
I got you. This is the next one. And I go down to Planning Commission toggle.
No, I don't know why you're going to a toggle. There's no toggle, Mary. There's City Council Meeting Livestream Video. And then click on the arrow, so that it will bring it up. You're trying to go into On-Demand Old Meetings. It's right above that. You scrolled past it.
Um, the building picture.
There you go.
There you go. Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you. Were there any other comments that we were, did somebody call in or beep through?
Uh, somebody did try to beep through.
Okay, well, I'll make the announcement then. If they are livestreaming, that the phone line is now available, if they want to phone back, we'll wait another couple minutes, 702-589-9629.
Planning Commission Public Comments.
Did somebody call in?
Hello, my name is David Barker. I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, we need to mute that. Am I on the record?
You are.
Hi, my name is David Barker. My wife Stephanie and I live at 401 Utah. Uh, we just sent in by way of email a position in support of the variance, but we were concerned, because we sent it in about an hour ago, whether it actually made your meeting. We live, again, 401 Utah is about one block east and three houses down from the subject property. We have also, as the other citizen talked about a few minutes ago, talked to the residents, and we have, they've gone through with us, explained their vision of the property. We believe it enhances the historic appearance of their home and our neighborhood. We're excited to see them move forward with the project, and we stand in strong support.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll continue to watch your meeting livestream. Thank you again.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
And if anybody else would like to phone in, the phone line is open. We'll wait another couple minutes. It feels like a sufficient amount of time to wait, so we'll go ahead and proceed with the agenda. For possible action, approval of the minutes of the September 16th, 2020, regular meeting.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second on approval of the minutes of the September 16th regular meeting. All in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me post. Thank you. Agenda item number one, approved. Number two for possible action, V-20-649, Joyce Camille Ariati at 307 Utah Street. A public hearing on an application for a variance in the R17 Single Family Residential Zone to permit an addition with a front setback of 15 feet, whereas Section 11-3-5B of the City Code requires a minimum front setback of 20 feet. Staff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant would like to build an addition onto the front of the attached garage, and a portion of that proposed addition encroaches into the required front setback. And if Holly could put up that first graphic, thank you. You can see from the site plan that this property is a non-standard shape and technically fronts on three streets. And although the house faces Utah Street, for corner lots, the City Code defines the front lot line as the shortest lot line abutting a street. And as you can see, that for this odd-shaped lot, neither Park or Utah Street is the front of the property. Per code, the front is that short stub street, which per the site plan is on the left side of the home, and that's where the required front setback of 20 feet would be measured from. And because this lot is in the Historic District, one of the older lots, based on old, old setbacks from back in that time, the property line along Utah Street is allowed to have a 15-foot setback. That's considered a side street. And likewise, so is Park Street. They're allowed to have a 15-foot setback there. And you can see that the existing garage encroaches into that setback along Park Street, but that's because it was built decades ago and was originally actually a detached garage, so it was allowed to have that setback back then. But you can see in the darker shaded portion where the addition at the front of the house is, and you can see that basically a sliver of it encroaches into the 20-foot setback to that left property line, and that's the only item that actually requires a variance per code. Again, the existing garage is existing, and the other additions are open patio covers, and those are allowed to encroach into the other setbacks. So the only item before the Planning Commission is the sliver of the front new master bedroom addition that will have a setback of approximately 15 feet at the closest point to that property line, to that small stub street. As noted, the property is within the city's Historic District, and the Historic Preservation Committee reviewed this request last month and is opposed to the addition onto the front of the home, and you've got those minutes with your staff report. Although Utah Street is technically not the front property line per code for this lot, the other homes that face on Utah Street in the immediate vicinity generally meet or exceed the required 20-foot front setback for their lots. Of course, the other lots on Utah Street, that is technically the front property line for those lots. For this lot, the existing historic home will remain at an approximate setback of 30 feet to the Utah Street property line, but the new addition will be at the allowed 15-foot setback to the Utah Street property line. A note is that should the variance be denied, the applicant still has a right to build an addition. That meets code requirements, so that means they could technically make that addition smaller, so that it didn't encroach into that left setback area, but it still could be 15 feet from the Utah Street property line, as long as it didn't encroach into the front setback as shown. The staff report goes through the findings regarding the five criteria that the Planning Commission must find in favor of in order to approve any variance request. Even one of the findings not being met, you know, could be cause for denial. Now, if it's approved, there is a draft recommended condition of approval, the standard condition that if this were approved, the variance would apply only to that encroachment as shown on your plans and not beyond that. The staff report also notes that there was discussion by the Historic Preservation Committee regarding height, but an opinion was offered afterwards that slope, roof slope might be a more important issue. But that is technically not an issue before the Planning Commission. There's also an alternate finding for denial, should the commission choose that option.
Thank you, Susan. Do we have any questions for staff? Mr. Matuska?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to kind of recap, Susan, what you've said, as far as the need for a variance, if I'm looking at the drawing correctly, it looks like there's about a four-foot, 11-and-a-half-inch encroachment in the drawing as planned, and if they were to, in essence, cut five feet off the end of that, they could still build this addition if it were just that much shorter, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you, I've read the notes from the Historic Preservation Committee meeting, but they didn't, I don't understand some of the jargon and some of the guidelines that they're referring to. Could you maybe encapsulate briefly kind of what their objections appear to be?
Certainly. Basically, for most of the homes in the Historic District, as well as commercial buildings and city buildings, there are guidelines that have been adopted for them, and they cover a wide variety of items. One of the standards, thinking of them back in order, is regarding front yards, that usually the front yards are, you know, grassy and only interrupted by a sidewalk or walkway. And so one of the comments the committee made was that the addition encroaching in front of the existing home would interrupt that continuous streetscape of yards for that block of Utah Street. The guidelines also state that, you know, any, that the homes obviously are one-story, and this addition will be one-story. It also references that roof pitches are of a certain type, and the drawing that went to the committee, one of the elevations was not complete, and so they were questioning whether or not the roof pitch of the addition would match the roof pitch of the house. They did question why the new roof was higher than the existing home. And basically, once the designer was able to provide the correct elevation, which you have, and Holly, that's Slide 2 of the PowerPoint, you can see that, yes, that addition on the top drawing there, the addition is on the left, it's got a slightly higher roof than the rest of it, but you can see from the elevation on the bottom left of the page, the part that is to the left of the fireplace is basically that new addition, and you can see that because, basically, per the floor plan, it's a wider part of the home where the garage is, the reason that roof is higher is because you can see that the designer was trying to match the roof pitch of the house. And so committee members had questioned both the height and the pitch, and as I said, unfortunately, the committee did not have that bottom-left drawing correctly provided to them, so they couldn't see how it would look. And they knew this item would be coming before the Planning Commission this week. Since we couldn't convene the committee again, what we did is we contacted one of the members on the committee, and Ms. Davenport has professional background in Historic Preservation Matters with regard to her position with the National Park Service, and we simply asked for her individual opinion, because she cannot speak technically for the committee. Her individual opinion is that, was that matching the roof slope was more important than the height issue. And they brought up other suggestions regarding matching window styles, and also that the established, or the listed guideline for the wall material here is what they call rolock red brick, and part of the addition, as you can see, will have some vertical siding on it, but as you can see from the photos that are attached, parts of the existing home and garage have vertical siding, so they were basically trying to match that. So if you've got any other questions, I'll answer those, but, you know, I don't think it's necessarily pertinent to go through every single item that the committee brought up.
No, I agree. And just to, kind of one last question about the notes. It sounds as if the applicant is very willing to do virtually everything possible to match the historic style and material, as you mentioned, roof pitch, the materials, the brick, the wood fascia where it's currently wood. Is that an accurate statement?
That's how they've represented it, yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions for staff? I would appreciate if you wouldn't mind, please, defining for the group the term "non-contributing" as attributed to this structure, please.
Yes, and unfortunately, I wish I were more of an expert on this, because the experts' opinions on that can differ than what a layperson might consider. Essentially, with regard to the professional consideration of whether or not a property contributes to the Historic District has to deal usually with how original the current home is in terms of construction. The Historic District was added to the National Register of Historic Places in 1983, and that was based on an initial survey of several hundred homes, which became the Historic District, and that information is on our website, where you can look up the descriptions of the different groups of homes, and then there's an inventory sheet for each building in the district, and it labels whether or not the property or the building back in 1983 was considered in original condition, or whether or not any changes or improvements were considered retrievable, meaning they could be fixed, or whether or not the changes made it basically irreplaceable, or, I'm sorry, I'm not remembering the correct word, if it had basically been too badly changed so as to be so far strayed from the original position. And then based on that, there was another categorization as to whether or not that home was considered to be contributing or non-contributing to the district. So in other words, if the property, if the building was still in its original condition or very close to it, it was considered contributing to the context of the Historic District. If already so many had changes had been made, that it was, you know, had veered from the original construction, then it was considering non-contributing to the district. And per the professional standards, what they have described to the committee is that from an architectural and historical standpoint, altering, basically making more than two different types of alterations to a building can kick it into the non-contributing category. So for instance, if all you did was say, and close a porch, that's changing one of the original features, you know, or maybe you got rid of the screen door and changed the original front door from a single door to double doors or something like that, that's changing a second feature. If all you did was change all the windows in a home, that would still be changing one feature. But if you ended up doing all of those things, like changing a window and changing a door and closing a porch, per the standards used... and closing a porch, per the standards used by the State Historic Preservation Office with regard to how things are considered to be eligible and not for listing in the district, that would be a far enough deviation that it would make the property be considered non-contributing to the context of the historic district. Now, back in 1983, when the district was nominated and added to the National Register of Historic Places, more than half of the buildings within the district were considered to be contributing. I don't recall the exact percentage. It might have been in the 60% to 70% range, something like that. Because obviously, there were newer buildings in the district and other buildings, you know, many of them have had significant changes. Some parts of the historic district are more, shall we say, better preserved than other parts of the historic district. Because that survey of those properties is so old, you know, going on for decades now, the city was able to get grant funding to be able to hire a professional consulting firm to do a new updated survey of the historic district. And so, they had their professionals review every building and make a, basically, an updated determination as to whether or not the building was still considered contributing to the context of the historic district. For this particular address, they said, based on prior changes to the home, that it, even though the 1983 determination said it was contributing to the context of the district, the current evaluation is that the home is not contributing to the context of the historic district. And so, that was one of the questions brought up by a member at last week's historic, or rather, last month's Historic Preservation Committee was, would be, would this addition in and of itself change the status of the home from contributing to non-contributing? And the answer was no, because the recent survey determined that due to changes already made, such as connecting the house to the garage and other changes, that its current status is not contributing to the context of the historic district.
Excellent description of that. Thank you for that, Susan, we appreciate it. And to, just to clarify and make sure we're all on the same page, so, all the construction types, the style, the materials, and so forth, is all conforming to city code. The only issue is that there's a encroachment of four-feet-eleven-and-a-half inches in that section of the property, and that's all we're considering for this variance request, right?
That's all, that's before the Planning Commission. What went to the Historic Preservation Committee it itemized the various things that did not conform to the guidelines. And it can get rather nitpicky in kind of those things. But again, the only issue before the commission is that setback encroachment.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, I'll bring it to the commission then for any comments and discussion. Mr. Matuska? It is?
Actually, right.
Okay. Then let us reach out, thank you, Mr. Matuska, to the applicant for any comments.
Was she expecting a call? I forwarded the information, that email there.
And while we're dialing the applicant--
Here she is.
Okay.
This is the Planning Commission. How may I help you?
Hi, this is Joyce Camilla Ariati calling in. I have Paul Wachs and Jason Mayhew here as well. I just wanted to clarify, I know that there was a question that came up as to whether or not the front yard, the grass, would be interrupted by the new addition. I wanted to clarify that that is not the case. The grass will not be interrupted whatsoever. The front yard more or less stays the same because the addition's going on to gravel, the existing gravel, where we have two gravel driveway, where we have two cars parked currently. And you're welcome to drive by and check that out for not changing the grass whatsoever. If you have any questions for Paul or Jason, they're also here to answer them.
Yeah, we have a question from Mr. Lassoff.
Hi, Joyce, this is Nate Lassoff. And I do have a question. If you tried to stay within the setbacks when you were drawing this up the first time around, or if this is your first draft? Just curious why we needed to go outside of the setbacks?
This is Jason Mayhew. We did about three or four different designs on this, and keeping it inside the setbacks, because this is the master bedroom and master bathroom, made it to where we were, had very little closet space, which is something that they needed more of also. So, just squaring off the building versus putting it at an angle right there gave us the ability to have more bathroom space and closet space.
Just to follow up, is there any way that you could push that east five feet? Or, right, when I'm looking at this top to bottom?
At that point, it would start going into a window that goes in, existing window that goes into the kitchen right there, which we're trying to preserve that, and just come out where the addition was, where it connected the garage to the house. We're trying to just come out at that location and not block any other windows there.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, looks like there's no more questions from the Planning Commission. Is there anything else that you'd like to add, Ms. Ariati?
Do you have anything to say before you're left with a story? Do you want to--
No, I believe we're good.
If you want to note what you're going to say--
Okay. Thank you very much for calling in.
Thank you.
And as this is a public hearing, we are going to make the phone line available for anybody that'd like to call in and add their comments.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Commission. Can you hear me properly? I can't tell.
Oh, we can.
Do you get the feedback from the other office of the meeting? Should I mute my line?
Yes, please. Or just turn it down. I don't really hear any feedback at this point, so I think you're good.
Okay, thank you, Tammy.
And just so you know, I'm going to set the timer for five minutes, but go ahead.
We need about a half a minute to do disclosure, but, okay. Good evening, Commission. My name is Mary Shope, S-H-O-P-E. I live at 3 Hillside Drive here in Boulder City.
Oh, now I hear your feedback. Can you just turn your computer down?
I'm trying to find it. Give me a second.
Or go to a different room to talk to me.
There we go. I turned it down.
Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that. We'll start over. Hey, good evening. My name is Mary Shope, S-H-O-P-E. I received a public notice, hearing notice, because I am one of the property owners at 3 Hillside Drive, within the 500 feet of the remodel and the variance request. I'd like to say thank you, Commission, and thank you, Susan and staff, for being there, as well as the Historic Preservation Commission. You guys have been great to identify things that are, you know, you have that expertise, that passion to save our city and to make it more, because more relevant in the historic district. But I would like to say tonight, we deny the requested variance as based on, I missed a few papers here, give me a second, requested variance, because it's not necessary in order to preserve and enjoy a substantial property right. Again, neighbors, it's nothing personal, it's just that I think you can work within what you have, you bought the house from the buildings in Rizley's. Please, please, to protect our neighborhood. You say, Mr. Mayhew of the JAM letter, I think it's on page 29, mentions, it doesn't affect any neighbors. Yes, it does. At 3 Hillside, I can stand in my front porch, my front yard, and I can see your home, and I can see all your lives, I can see your comings and goings. And so, it does, it does affect the whole neighborhood. It also affects, if you look at the variances, reasoning for variances, as detrimental to public welfare. Yes, when people come for art in the park, they look at the homes, and you're more visible than me up on the hill, me referencing my property. And, but, it brings back what Boulder City and the historical part that the Historic Preservation Commission considers. The other thing, because I don't have much time, is anybody can talk to me about my passion of this town, I was born and raised here, and those homes mean so much to this community. Also, I'd like to ask the request of the developers as well as the owner, is to consider that of the Dark Sky Association guidelines and everything, that light pollution. I mean, nobody's mentioned where any light trespass. I mean, I don't really get it now, but if you start expanding farther and further and encroachments into everything, it does affect the neighborhood. So, again, I'd like to say, as a neighbor, I like you as a neighbor, but I feel that we need to deny, I'd like to ask the commission to deny this request based, because, it's because, give me one more second, I'm blanking face just yet, and I apologize. If you look under the options on page 25, it says conditionally approved, exceptional conditions to this property. Not really. I mean, all of the homes up in this area have some different particulars, and you bought it knowing that. Also, too, variance is necessary. No, it's not necessary. I mean, my house is smaller, I would love to do a lot of things, but again, we bought historic homes. The granting, number three, variance, is it not detrimental? Yes, it is. It's detrimental to me, and I'm just one member of the public. But it's also when art in the park bursts, and people from out of town come here, from Maine, and say, let's see the old historic section. It is detrimental, and it will, as number four and five, it will affect, affect the historic district. So, let's honor all the passion and the hard work the Historic Preservation Commission did, that of the Planning Commission, of Susan's division, that you give us a great packet, and do deny this variance for encroachment into and off of Utah Street in the historic section. Thank you very much. This is Mary Shope, S-H-O-P-E. I live at 3 Hillside Drive, and I'm a native Boulder City person. And I'd like to keep Boulder City as Boulder City, as much within reason. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Stay safe.
Thank you, Ms. Shope. Was there somebody else ringing through while that, the call was on? Did you note?
I don't know. I think it was feedback.
Okay.
That's what I think it was.
Well, we'll allow another minute or two for any other public comments for this portion of the agenda.
This is, hello, this is Camilla Ariati, Joyce Camilla Ariati again, and I just wanted to say, in response to Ms. Mary Shope's comments, I just wanted to let her know that when I purchased this home, a part of the amazing process that I went through is I got to meet the Rizley's. And one of my family is very close friends with the building. In fact, the two grandkids, I know them both very close, and they come to my home every, and park in my driveway in the exact spot where this addition is going, which is not on the side where Ms. Shope would actually see it. It's on the other side of the garage. But the buildings are close family friends. I have a letter from the Rizley's family saying that when I purchased this house, they felt it was going to family. And we are very passionate about preserving the history of this house. We understand all of the history of it because of our close association with the buildings and the Rizley's. So, I appreciate her comments, and I am just as passionate about preserving the history and maintaining what this house looks like. The addition, I'm not sure if people realize this, is completely enclosed. You can't see where this addition is going because of the trees that block it. So, it's really kind of secluded, you wouldn't see it. You don't see the cars parked there now. And I think that's another important thing to note. We also want to make sure that, you know, she mentioned, is it necessary? We can live with what we've got, we can live with what we bought. We have two young kids, one's a boy and one's a girl, and only two bedrooms in this house. We need another bedroom for our children. It's not because we think it's nice, it's not because we want to put an exercise room or something that's not needed. This is a necessary addition for our family, and we love this house, we plan to live in it until we die. It's not like this is a fleeting kind of decision that we've made because it's convenient or fun. This is necessary for our lifestyle with our young family. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, are there any other phone calls for public hearing? We'll leave the phone line available for another minute or two. Okay, we'll close the public hearing for this agenda item, and now bring it to the commission for discussion. Mr. De Teresa? Do we have a microphone he can get to for the record?
Uh-huh.
Perfect. That podium's perfect, thanks.
I drove past the Ariati home yesterday, and it's a beautiful home. And looked at the proposed elevations and where the, and Mrs. Ariati is right that the trees in the front will block the new addition, although even if the trees weren't there, I don't think that it would be aesthetically a problem. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with this. It's only a tiny encroachment, four-feet-eleven inches. eleven inches, so I have no problem with it, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any other commission members have comments, discussion? Yes, Ms. Moner.
So, I'm for this variance, it's such a small amount, one of the things I've noticed, and for full disclosure, I know the Ariatis, but their yard, when you're at one of the festivals, is always impeccable, they keep the front of that house, they've had people during public events be able to sit and share their grass with folks, I've seen strangers throw a blanket down and picnic there, they're very concerned, I know from what Camille was, Joyce Camille was saying regarding keeping the historic nature as close as possible, and for me, four feet on the corner is not really an issue for me, so I'm for this.
Thank you. Either a board comments or a motion?
I have...
Mr. Matuska?
I have one additional comment. I'll be honest, like most, most of the things we deal with, I struggle with this one a little bit. You know, while, I guess what I would say is, we do have standards for a reason, and this is a very unique historic area, one that we all appreciate quite a bit, and it seems as though the applicant could certainly design something, a slightly smaller bedroom suite, this is 29 feet in length, cutting it down to fit within the, within the required setbacks, would be a 25-foot long bedroom, you know, and it's not my place to say what a person needs or doesn't need, but it just goes back to the general nature of variances, they're not, I don't see that we should be giving them out like candy on Halloween, I think that a person can in fact enjoy significant, you know, can enjoy their property without this variance. However, all that being said, and the fact that the applicant certainly has a strong interest in maintaining historical preservation, and the simple fact that they can build this almost as is, with or without the variance, and I suspect that they would go ahead and build it five foot shorter if we don't give the variance, so all that pathway, just to say that I can support this, even though generally I'm not in favor of providing variances. Thank you.
Thank you for comments, sir. Any others? I'll tag on to that, while I do appreciate the comments from all, particularly the applicant about historic preservation and materials and so forth, and I agree that the property is, you know, is magnificent there in the, in the area of all the civic events, I love that property, it's beautiful. But none of that really has anything to do with the variance request, it is strictly a setback issue, and it is a small sliver, and we tend to think that, well, it's not that much, but on the conservative side of interpretation of the code, it stands, you know, kind of black and white in that area. So, you know, all those other things notwithstanding, very positively reflecting on the reason to be in favor of the variance, and indeed, they can go ahead and build exactly what they are going to, just a little bit shorter if, if they don't get the variance, so it's not like the neighbors are going to have any real satisfaction by seeing the whole project not go forward at all, so. Anyway, just a couple of the comments, I think it's important to share those, to express them, and for the public to know kind of where we're coming from as a group. We are, in many cases, kind of, I mean, easy issues don't come here, right, they're the complicated issues, and that's what we're in the business of, kind of, helping to interpret the intent and the use and the benefit of property usage, so, I think it's, it's never an easy thing to consider these matters, and there's always a yes and a no, and it always comes down to that, so. Anyway, I just wanted to say that as the chair of the committee, the commission. So my comments are complete, so if there's any other comments or a motion, we'll be happy to have that.
Ernie B. I see, I'd be happy to make a motion. I would move to, I would move to conditionally approve the requested variance based on the staff findings and conditions that they have, that are set forth in the presentation.
Okay, motion to conditionally approve, and we're going to have to refresh my, or point out what those conditions were listed in there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, there's only one listed condition, the standard condition that the variance approval is based on the plans and information submitted and discussed as part of the variance request, and the variance shall not apply to deviations to the plans if the scope of the variance is expanded beyond that shown on the plans and submitted information.
Okay, so the motion is to approve based on that condition, is that correct? Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll second the motion.
And the second. Any further comments? Okay, we'll call for the vote, we have a motion for approval with the conditions as listed, and with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay here. So we have nay from Mr. Rudd, Mr. Lassoff, and Mr. Walden, and yea from the others. And with that, the motion to pass carries. So, item number three on the agenda, monthly progress report on development allotments.
No comment.
And this is the public comment section of the meeting, each person has up to five minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair, comments made during the public comment period of the agenda may be on any subject. All remarks shall be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole, not to any individual member of the Planning Commission, the audience, or of city staff, and so we'll open up the public comment now. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section of this meeting, and thereby call the meeting closed.